Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is my speaker, my name is Abu Khan. I'm the vice-chair of the RBC executive committee. And thank you for inviting RBC to you, Stradham. And I'm going to take this moment to kind of wow for the blueberries and all the other things, you know, that comes with it.
Yes, thank you, Bob. Delicious.
You have to repeat that when you come down.
Is he getting bored?
Good work, Mr. Jay.
Let's give him a round of applause.
First, our agenda, to introduce ourselves, you know, who we are and what town we are representing. When I start from me, you know, I am the representative of the town of Seabrook.
I'm Cliff Center, the director of Rockinghamland Commission.
Rockinghamland's also the administrator of the Rockinghamland Commission.
Bob Goodrich, Rep. Bromo-Stratum. Scott Bogel, Senior Transportation Planner with the Rockinghamland. Dave Walker, Transportation Program Manager with RBC.
Raymond Van Hampton.
Nick.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Jake Corral. I'm the happy husband of Monica Corral.
Okay.
I'm Monica Corral.
Director of MacJare, Captain Bob Wolfsburg. Mike Dorell, Parkinson. We're talking to Sharon.
Sharon Exeter. John McPhee. Paul Howard.
Bob Brown. Rod.
Steve Parkinson. Boyce. Rick Taylor.
Roger Rabbit. Hampton. And I work at the planning board at Seabrook.
Stephen Gerardo. Greenland. Martin Tiller. Happing.
Joe Horvath. New Hampshire.
Al Horvath. Northampton.
Mary Slime. Stradham.
Will Wilson, Commissioner from Northampton.
Don Hoffman. Seabrook. Glenn Koppel, new Commissioner from Kingston.
Colleen Lake. Stradham. Townsend and Regent of Administration.
Stella Sammons. Stradham.
Joey Moore. State Rep. Stradham.
Cheryl Cox. Exeter.
Carl Griffin. Windham. Mark Traeger. Sandown. Don Clement. Exeter.
Glenn Davidson. Department of Transportation.
Mary Warren. Newmarket.
Francis Chase. Seabrook. Jeremy LaRose. Coast.
Ed Warren. East Kingston.
Kerry Roman. Ry.
Dan Musso. Brentwood. Fred Emanuel. Stradham. Doug Stammen. From Stradham. Paul Lockwood. New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Oliver Heath. From Wyndham, New Hampshire. Jim Johnson. Brentwood.
Okay. Because we do some of the things, procedural things, you know, in every meeting, to do the right thing, I'm new in this business. So to do the right thing, I'm going to ask Cliff Center to take over from here, you know, from here on.
Well, we wanted to first thank Stradham for hosting the meeting here tonight. And Bob's going to say a few words about that. Lincoln Daly, who was going to do a presentation about sort of a planning update for Stradham, was ill today, so I did communicate with him and he told me sort of the things he was going to cover, so I will do my best to sort of summarize some of the things he was going to be talking about.
The three of us are sort of pinch hitting, as you can guess. I certainly didn't expect a sell-out crowd. Is there something going on we don't know about?
The blueberries.
Oh, well.
I think it's local agriculture.
Oh, good. It's about time, you know, eat all. Welcome. A critical piece of information, I see most everybody just come in the side door. The Johns are right straight back, if needed. I've been a commissioner, what, seven, eight years, I guess, at this point. Tried to make most of the meetings. A lot of it is still confusing to me when we get all these changes, financial changes between the federal government, the state, and whatever. But these guys know what they're doing and a lot of times it's a case of, well, okay, you know, and things work out. So other than that, I really don't have much to say. Just welcome. I think we're going to have a good session tonight. A lot of familiar faces, a lot of unfamiliar faces, but that's the way it should be. Thanks for coming.
So again, I will give a quick overview of some of the things that Lincoln was going to be talking about. Three things in particular. One is, three updates in particular. One is about the Gateway District and where that stands and what's happening. The second, a study that's underway between Exeter and Stradham, looking at the financial benefits, costs, advisability of sharing sewer and water services. Just to explain, that project a little bit is not finished, so no results, but we can tell you at least what's getting done. And lastly, the Plan New Hampshire, the results of the Plan New Hampshire Charette that were done for this part of Stradham, as a matter of fact, a lot of it in this room. So that's what I'll cover. First being the Gateway. Dover, I think, was the first community in New Hampshire to adopt what's called a Form-Based Code, which is a different way of zoning. Instead of zoning that says, these are the things you can't do and these are the general things you can in a particular area, Form-Based Code tries to give more guidance to developers by showing the sort of the form of the development that is desired by the community for a particular area. And the Portsmouth Avenue section of Stradham, the, from the town's master plan standpoint, is a section of the community that the community would like to see over time redeveloped into something a little more akin to a community and economic development center. I think that's the way I would summarize it. And through a very long planning process, the Gateway Committee in town was established to look at that particular part of town. As a matter of fact, I think we had a meeting six years ago in this room where Chuck Grassi, who was the planner at the time, first sort of presented this information. I think it was six years ago, might have been more recent than that. And there were some beautiful graphics shown about what the Gateway area might look like and some discussion about the possibility of pursuing that. And lo and behold, four years later, it got to the point of being a concrete proposal that was put before the town and adopted, I think, in 2010. So that is now in place. It's a voluntary approach that is an alternative way of developing for landowners who wish to use it. And it envisions sort of a slow turnover of and redevelopment of property in the Gateway over time. I can't tell you a lot of the details about the code. I didn't, I was not involved in preparing that, although Julie LeRanch in our office was, but I can tell you what the type of development that is the objective here, and this is from a presentation that Julie gave to the Economic Development Committee and a larger public meeting that was here on May 30. But basically, the elements that are focused on are trying to sort of establish a commercial center where development is walkable, some of the destinations are walkable, buildings are fairly close to the street, not set back, with parking in front, like it's typical of a highway commercial development. The town is interested in evolving that highway commercial development, as I said, more of a town center kind of location. It has a network of streets rather than a single linear road and some mixture of uses so that it's not just commercial, it's not just industrial, it's not just office, it's not just residential, but appropriate uses are. And a lot of the development is done at a scale that is sort of people-friendly. There's lots more of information about this with the town, at the town, you can speak to Lincoln about it if you're interested, but this is the zone itself. It runs from 101, 108 interchange at the southern end to just out the Buntry Hill Road. And it's really got three pieces. One is the blue, the light blue, which is the most intense development. There's mixed use there, there's commercial and business retail promoted and allowed. The outer zone, in red, is less intense development, but also mixed use, commercial versus retail and residential, a difference residential in red. And open space zone is the areas of green on the southern side. So that's basically the Gateway Commercial District. It's in place. I believe there's been one development proposal that has been, that has come forward near the town hall or the town office on Buntry Hill. Somebody from Stradham can tell me that? That's what I've been told. Anybody from the planning board here? That's what I think. One development so far has come forward. So these are some of the, some of the sort of ideas behind Form-Based Code, and they try to define things like business office, the objective of the development form, for example, business office for mixed use, for residential, for roads and street layout, for parking design, and public space, and walking paths, et cetera. In other words, the code gives examples of what the community's objective is for those types of development. So second planning update piece is this Exeter-Stradham sewer evaluation study. The two communities are, I should have, as the segue, I should have said, between the Gateway and this project, they are connected. And that is, the Gateway development envisions eventually the possibility of there being sewer and water service serving that zone to allow a higher density of development, which is when it would begin to work out as a, as kind of a community center, which the town envisioned. The town has, is in the process of developing fire suppression system, that's what we heard about six, five or six years ago. I'm not sure where that stands, how far along that's come, but it's a, it's a project that is on its way. Exeter has no, and has been studying, has been doing feasibility studies for sewer expansion as well. However, no definitive engineering plans developed or precise cost estimates. The town of Exeter, in comparison, has a sewer and water system that serves the downtown and peripheral commercial highways, including Portsmouth Avenue, and is in need of upgrading both its wastewater treatment plant and to some extent, some aspects of its water supply and water supply treatment. So the two communities really cooperatively wanted to go about studying the pros and cons of working together on sewer and water upgrades. Where Stradham would potentially see the benefit from sort of a economy of scale, where they get the advantage of Exeter expanding incrementally on its, on the system it has for both sewer and water. And Exeter would have the benefit over time of a larger rate base to help pay for the upgrades that it has to undertake. So that was the thought behind the study, perfectly logical thing to look at, to try to understand what the pros and cons of doing that. They wanted a third party to facilitate that discussion and an engineering firm who had not been too involved in any of the sewer and water studies that either community had been doing, so they had a fresh look at it. And so we were asked to be the facilitator. We went through an engineering selection process and hired a firm called Kleinfelder S.E.A. to do the following scope. One is determine the comparative financial costs and benefits of working together as opposed to working separately. Secondly, evaluate how that might be done. There are different approaches you can take. You can either take it with the simplest approach, where Stradham becomes a customer of Exeter's water and sewer, or a more complicated approach where the two communities essentially combine the facilities and combine the assets and work together in a district, sewer and water district. Those are the sort of the two extremes and one option in the middle. To evaluate those, pluses and minuses of those, and then lastly, to identify the agreement itself. How would the two work together in developing an agreement that would specify how capital and operating costs were allocated? So that's the scope of that project. As I say, it's nearly done, but not finished, not published. Will be, for the, a draft will be out before the end of July. And lastly, the Stradham Design Study. The town applied and was approved to do a project through Plan New Hampshire to take a sort of 30,000-foot view of what might be done in the town center of Stradham to achieve some of the community's goals there, to make it a more livable, walkable, vibrant town center. We're talking about this, where we are. The idea of a Plan New Hampshire project is, Plan New Hampshire is a nonprofit organization that has members who are planners, architects, engineers, who volunteer largely, they're trying to work with the community, undertake kind of big picture planning issues that the community identifies as wanting help with. Not taking it to the, to the point of defining precise actions that need to be taken or costs or anything like that. It's really visioning. It's a visioning process. Many communities in our region have used this. Hampton, Blastout, Windham, to name, and Exeter. It's all within the last four or five years that all used this process to help define some significant change that needs to occur in some area of the town. And this is the study area here, was right around Stradham Circle, essentially right where the Winnetka Road comes in, you know, what everybody thinks of this Stradham center. What they developed really was sort of two parts. One was a very sort of a first step, set of suggestions that had to do with looking at just some short-term things that could be done along 33 to make it a little bit more attractive, more livable, more of a sense that it was a town center, things like a bike path, a sidewalk, streetlights, signage. And, you know, the town has been trying to do some of that through the T grants program, and I think, and this is really affirming that effort that was already, that is already underway. And the more sort of futuristic view, the long-term view, what was developed was this, which I will explain in terms of the set of recommendations that were included, that this is again, the Stradham Circle, this is Winnetka Road, 108, 33. And so what you see is explained here. In terms of roadways, which the MPO is probably most interested in, you know, understanding and seeing what may be coming to us as a project request, a roundabout at Winnetka Road and 33, a roundabout at 33, and sort of the northeast quadrant of the circle right here, right up there, the T intersection at 108 and the circle, the northwest quadrant. So those are the big kind of road. I think they call them recommendations. They really think of them as, here's an idea, there are two things you want to do with it. And so those, those three things were put out. I think the concept of a roundabout here in this Stradham Town Center is that it accomplishes something that the town will always struggle with, because Route 33 is a busy road and always will be a busy road, and how do you put a town center, you know, around a very busy road? Well, one, one way you do that, without compromising the ability of the road to move cars, one way you do that is a roundabout. It slows cars down dramatically, but maintains a very high level of throughput for cars. And it also can be used physically as kind of a gateway to, say, the beginning of a town center. So it serves some, some very practical outcomes, and it's also very safe, much safer than intersections, similar to intersections. In the village center, what they threw out, as, threw against the wall, I would say, is recommendations, develop a community water and sewer system or tie-ins, or one or one has developed further down Portsmouth Avenue, to help bring about some of the things that are identified later on. Use of signage and sidewalks, curving, lighting, and other amenities to help define what the village is, the area of the village. Create a town common as a community gathering space, add development density and mixed use for economic development. Plan for new roads and streets, in other words, one, one street deep, further deep than you have now, so that you actually have somewhat of a, a network of roads eventually. And this would be, you know, these are ideas that would probably be in the scale of 50 years or so, where they would really come to fruition. But that's the idea of, of a vision. It's really thinking long-term about what changes you want to see happen. And then lastly, as opportunities arise, think of the town center as a place where you want to have civic activity. So if there's an opportunity to build a community center, we have one here, but if there's something addition, addition, addition to that, you think of the town center like they used to be thought of, the place where all that stuff needs to happen. So that's the planning update. And I hope I haven't gotten too much of it wrong, but one thing I wanted, wanted to be clear about with the Charette, the town has not, as far as I know, accepted this yet, or is in the process of thinking about some of these recommendations. I think they're sort of going back and forth with Plan New Hampshire about what some of those recommendations are and what's, what the content of the plan is. So I may be able to answer questions, you can try me, but again, I'm doing this for Lincoln, I'm not sure I will. So if there are any questions, you want to give it a shot, I'll give it a shot.
I have a question and a suggestion. I serve on the Southeast Water Show, I'm a resident town exeter sewage treatment facility. Looking to buy a fuel.
Buy a fuel.
If you watch the documentary called Fuel, you'll see that you can convert a sewage treatment plant into growing algae, using algae and algae fiber. It's very popular in Southern California and in the northern country. Watch the documentary, Dr. Mark Fuel. Everybody says they're afraid of something new, but you won't have any sewage treatment products.
Bob, are you ready? All right, well, thank you.
What exactly is the process for the town approving this, this project?
It would only get approved the way any sort of zoning gets approved, the town meeting. It would have to be, it would have to be translated into either a zoning, a capital project, or something like that. So this is really sort of, if anything, an aid to the, to the town, specifically the planning board, they wanted to, say, adopt some of these recommendations in the master plan that was sort of set, set the goals for the town for the long term.
One more quick question. On the funding and grants, how does that work?
For what?
I think with your mission statement that it suggested that there was government funding for some of these projects, how does that work? How does that come, all the people and?
For one of these projects?
For any of your projects. I mean, this is the only project I've sat here and heard so far, but on your mission statement, it states.
When you say your mission statement, you mean the town's?
Yeah, the commission.
Oh, I was, I was talking about, I was sort of giving the planning update for Stradham, not for the commission.
But didn't most of this stuff come from the commission or not?
No.
It did? Okay.
Let me introduce Rocky and Brian, who are the chairman and team boss. Team boss is here. From, you can carry on.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for being late. I had a prior commitment, I thought we were putting it in Blastout at 5:00 and instead it was 6:30. Next item on the agenda is minutes from April 11.
Robert Vogel.
Questions remain and settled. Any discussions on the motion? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Close. And next item on the agenda is air quality conformity update, attainment, finding, and implementation. I'm Paul Lockwood, and you can refer to me if you need.
Thank you. I am Paul Lockwood from the Department of Environmental Services. And when I, when EPA made its recent ruling that declaring New Hampshire an attainment of the ozone standard, several MPOs asked, the tax asked me to make a presentation on this. I made a few copies here, but apparently the Rockingham area is far more civically minded than other areas. So I don't have enough copies, I apologize. Or is it the blueberries?
If I would just ask, pass it around, if you're, if you're a RBC commissioner or MPO member, please take one, otherwise refrain, and we'll see if there are any leftovers.
Do you have this in the electronic form?
I do.
Oh, you can post it on our website.
If you're interested, pass them around. So when I was asked to give a little update on the ozone standard, achieving attainment, I thought I'd do a little, little research with the history and background of all that's going on concerning ozone in New Hampshire in the past 20 or so years. And the notes I have here are essentially just that, they're not a handout in the truest sense of the word. And I quickly realized as doing this, that in order to do the topic justice, I had a choice of either giving about a one-hour presentation with a PowerPoint presentation or the seven-minute version standing in front of you right now. I'm sure you appreciate, you're getting a seven-minute version, I can show this. Right. Here we go. What it boils down to is basically there are three standards, which right now are in effect concerning ozone. In 1979, EPA passed a standard of 120 parts per billion, that's ozone in the air. At the time, New Hampshire was not an attainment. When we say an attainment, what it means is that we did not, we were not in conformance with those standards. We were above the standards, we had not achieved or attained compliance with it. So when I say attainment, what I really mean is achieving compliance. So when I say attainment, what I really mean is achieving compliance. So New Hampshire was not in compliance in 1979. In 1997, EPA reduced that level to 80 parts per billion, and once again, New Hampshire was not in compliance with those standards. Now, when the state of New Hampshire is, or any state for that matter, is not in compliance with particular standards, they have to provide a sort of a roadmap to EPA as to how they'll achieve compliance, and that's called a State Implementation Plan, or SIF. Now, everybody here is probably more than familiar with the TIF, the Transportation Improvement Plan, and the SIF, State Transportation Improvement Plan. DTS has the SIF. And the SIF is all the documents that we've ever provided to show how we would achieve compliance with the ozone standard. And this can consist of studies, GIGAS documents, fact sheets, regulations we passed, everything that we've ever provided for the State Implementation Plan. And it's critical because once EPA accepts them, they essentially are federal law, they are federally enforceable documents once they're part of the State Implementation Plan. This will become a little more enforcement later on, I'll just try to discuss a little here. Anyway, so in that time, DTS submitted a State Implementation Plan to show we achieved compliance. And by 2007, we had in fact achieved compliance and we demonstrated attainment for the ozone standard. In 2008, EPA further reduced the ozone standard, so that's the third standard, now all three are in effect. They reduced it from 80 parts per billion down to 75. By 2008, when they did that, New Hampshire was in compliance with that limit, so we didn't have to worry about proving compliance, or attainment, or being designated, anything went away together. However, the other two standards were in effect, even though we had demonstrated attainment with them. What we had to do is formally ask to be designated as in compliance or having achieved attainment, which we did. Now, what happened is just this past March, EPA formally revoked the 1979 standard, remember I said all the standards were in effect? Revoked them, and actually revoked them one year from July 20th, which is two days, three days from now. So we are actually still bound by these requirements until July 20th, 2013. However, what EPA said was that for transportation conformity, New Hampshire, the 1979 standard was revoked, and no one has to worry about proving conformance with that regulation. At the same time, under the 2008 standard, they declared New Hampshire as being, quote, "unclassifiable attainment." And my first question was, how can we be unclassifiable, and yet they're classifying us in attainment? Unclassifiable simply means that under the 2008 standard, we had not provided any documentation as we had with the other standards, therefore we were considered unclassifiable. It's an EPA classification, it's how they think. So basically, what does this mean for metropolitan planning organizations, for the regional agencies that were in non-attainment? What it really means is that the metropolitan planning organizations no longer have to demonstrate compliance with ozone standard, which is really volatile organic compounds and nitrous oxide, which are the ozone precursors. Now, thanks to this, Scott and David have been high-fiving each other because there was a slew of calculations and studies that are required to show they're in compliance with the regulations. So really, you know, what is the bottom line as far as funding goes? Now, in a few minutes, Clint is going to tell you about the federal transportation bill that was passed and does provide funding. As far as no longer being a compliance issue, what it means is that funds that were formally allocated for the non-compliant, non-attainment areas, which is what, Stratford Planning Agency, Rockingham, Southern New Hampshire, and Nashua, those funds are now available on a statewide basis. That being said, of course, the big concern is, well, what about all the projects that we want to have approved and that are going to require support through C-MAT funding or other highway transportation funding? What about those projects if funding is not available? Well, the fact is, we are still in what are referred to as a maintenance area, well, even though we're in attainment. Remember I said that all the documents are federally enforceable? Among the documents are what we call maintenance plans that we have submitted to EPA. And those maintenance plans say that we're going to continue to do emissions reductions, projects, the turnarounds, parking rides, mass transit, all the things that have been done to do emissions and congestion, we will continue to do those under the maintenance plan. So even though conformity, even though we don't have to worry about achieving or demonstrating compliance, we still have to do all the environmentally proactive things for transportation that were already planned. And because of that, funding will still be prioritized for maintenance areas, which are the former non-attainment areas. So the good news is funding will still be basically focused on the southern areas that were normally in non-attainment. There are still a few other minor bonuses that come along. Stage, gasoline stations no longer have to have stage-two vapor recovery. Vapor recovery, all your cars now, when you fill up your cars, the car itself recovers the fumes that used to spill out of the atmosphere. Now the gas stations no longer have to have the little cats that cover the nozzles to reduce emissions, that type of thing. There are no emission offsets. If a company wants to come into a formerly non-attainment area, previously they had to show, they showed emission offsets, which is kind of a cap and trade type thing, that's one. When this happened, you know, I was, of course, concerned that, well, there's going to be a yeah-but with EPA. You're in compliance and you don't go into attainment, but we're going to require something else. We very carefully checked with EPA, and from what we can gather, the only kind of yeah-buts is that we are still monitoring emissions, and of course, we're still required to meet the standards. So at the state level, all the testing we do, all the variations around, we're still collecting data, and we still have to show that we are meeting the proper standards. And I mentioned, air quality analyses will no longer be required by the MPOs. That being said, this doesn't take place till a year from now. So for the next year, we're essentially still bound by the, quote, "non-attainment" requirements. So although all the MPOs still have to do an air quality analysis, and of course, because of the planning period, they'll be doing one for, what is it, 2022, 2030, 2040, some of that effect. Even though a year from now, basically, we could all say, who cares anymore? As I mentioned, state implementation maintenance plans are still in effect, so we still expect to see all the transportation improvement projects that reduce emissions going through. And again, funding will still be available. In fact, I think under the new transportation bill, C-MAT, for example, that's congestion mitigation air quality, I think I've got that one right. There's $10 million a year available for New Hampshire for the next, each year for the next three years, those are still available. And of course, we still have to worry about general conformity. Now, transportation conformity obviously only worries about emissions from vehicles. General conformity worries about things like big power plants, what's called area sources, which is auto body shops that use solvents when they paint cars, point sources, area sources and off-road vehicles. So again, even though the MPOs, the metropolitan planning organizations are pretty much along the book as of next year, we still have to worry about emissions, we still have to keep producing emissions, and we still have to, well, significant projects, still have to worry about analyses if they don't lift any more emissions than previous. But for the most part, it's good news for all of the planning agencies. Are there any questions?
I have a question, I think it was simple.
Sure.
But you identified an initial standard and then two lower standards.
Yes.
But yet, even though this is going to go away, you still have to meet the old standards.
Yes.
What was the sense of issuing a new standard then?
My personal opinion? Not my sense.
Who is that applying?
This is your government.
DPA, don't ask them.
No, it's true. Unless EPA specifically revokes a standard, all the requirements for it are still in effect, even though it adopted a more stringent standard. Don't figure, that's the way your government works.
Does this mean our air quality is...
Well, you know, that's a good way to put it. Sorry, air quality is better. Oh, you know, it does bring up one other point. It's one of the yeah-buts with EPA. Just last, last year, they were about to adopt even more stringent standards, and the standards were going to be somewhere between, right now it's 75, it's going to be between 60 and 70. Now, a few handouts I did, you'll see a map. What we did is we mapped out where the non-attainment areas would be, at 60, 65, at 70 parts per billion. Come to find out, at 60, it covers most of the state. So that would put us right back into non-attainment. Now, that's the bad news. Good news is that in the time since we did that mapping, we have already achieved compliance with the 75 parts per billion, which is shown on the map. More than likely, you won't see a standard next year, 2013. It'll be sometime beyond that, it'll be a grace period for its implementation. By that time, New Hampshire will probably be in compliance with all the standards. And that answered your question, yes, air quality is improving. And it's due in part because it improved fuel, fuels that are out there, the onboard diagnostics program to make sure your cars are running clean. And again, you know, the projects that you folks do here at the local level, the go-arounds, the parking lots, these all have an effect, which we do work into our modeling to show in our attainment. So, you know, this is, you know, it's not just for traffic you're doing this, it's for the environment as well. Yeah.
I understand that you don't, are not responsible for EPA's mentality, but doesn't it strike you odd that if New Hampshire, with millions and millions of trees that we have here, is having struggling, making, what is a state like Delaware, I mean, that has almost all developed in, you know, or overpriced in New Jersey, how would, they don't even have a chance of being in compliance?
Believe it or not, you know, the number of trees that transpire, absorb carbon and sequester carbon, they really don't enter through our calculations. The modeling we use doesn't take that into account. It looks at emission sources and how they've been trending over the years. You know, it's really hard to qualify, you know, that's, you can get into a philosophical argument on the value of trees for sequestering carbon. I mean, what happens to all the carbon trees sequester, so the tree does? It's released back into the environment. What happens when you cut it down to vertical carbon, it's released to the environment. I mean, there are more trees every year than there are lost and liberate their carbon, but it's one of those things that's really hard to figure out exactly what trees are doing on a statewide level.
Question, do you have an answer?
Could you, anyone that has a question, could you say your name and the town they're from, so people that are listening at home or watch the...
Warren Kimball.
Richard German, Andrew Ball. Anybody else have to say their name? For you, I worked a plant in 1987 when the state of Massachusetts told us to lower our four... four...
Four.
We didn't, in one month, they charged us $25,000. So we had to bring our, and trees had nothing to do with it. This is an industrial plant, so I'm just referring to Paul, in Jersey, whatever. For you, could you explain why the 5,000 low is written?
That's high-level ozone, and that's ozone that's transported in from out of state, and it stays up in the upper atmosphere. What about Washington, of all things, sticks up to that transported ozone, and they catch it, it's kind of an odd thing. You'll see, the king also has a job with particulates, and that's because they're just the opposite, they're in a bowl, and in the winter, which is usually when we have the cleanest air, all the smoke from the woodstones settles into that bowl. Don't figure. Yes?
Doug Scamen. What would be the, the air people think was the right standard, the right amount of ozone to be healthy for the people in this state? That's one question. And number two, what, how much of the lowering of the ozone level is done by what's done locally, and how much of it is by reduction from materials that come in from Midwest?
Two good questions. The first one, you're actually asking me for medical opinion. I don't really know at what level ozone becomes a problem, whether it's chronic or acute. The EPA has, there was a National Science Advisory Committee, they're the ones that look at the medical data and they decide what the proper level should be. Of course, you know, as with any environmental or public health level, as soon as it's issued, people start complaining it's too restrictive, that it's going to hurt the economy, hurt business, and it is a trade-off. There has to be some kind of balance somewhere. As far as your second question, as far as how much ozone is transported versus created in the state, I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
I would say there are savings. Where are the savings from? From the in-state or from outside?
My personal opinion is it's probably more out of state, and the caveat is that it's because things like reformulated gasoline and lowered fuel emission, the better fuel standards that the government passed are the big-ticket items for reducing ozone. Now, you know, how much of that is within the state or how much is, you know, out of state, it's hard to say, but I would bet most of it is from out of state. And it's always been a big issue with our achievement of attainment, is the fact that a lot of pollution drifts up from the south. We were getting nailed for it, so it's been by EPA. Yes?
I'm Jack Kimball, I'm a businessman from Portsmouth, I also live in Dover. A lot of folks in the room may know Dean Kamen. Dean Kamen put out a report several weeks ago, that if every car in North America disappeared tomorrow, all of them, we'd have 2% reduction, that would be it. This is, I'm just telling you point-blank, this is a farce, I'm tired of listening to some of the stuff. And I think absolutely this is one way to draw revenue from sources, as far as I'm concerned, that are illegitimate. My question tonight is, how many of you up there are elected officials? One? No, not here, up there. How many of you are paid individuals? Would you mind answering the question as to where your money comes from? Who pays? Who pays you? I'm just, I'm curious to know, I want to know who's paying...
Mr. Chairman, Portier Board, I don't believe that a discussion of this is on the agenda, and I'd like to get moving back on track.
Well, Mr....
Wait, wait, listen to me. I lived here a long time. This is the first I've heard of any of this, and I pay attention. There's a lot of people in this room, I'm sure, that feel the same way.
Mr. Chairman, when the...
This is a complete, excuse me, this is a complete surprise to many folks here tonight.
What is?
All of this.
What? What is, what is all?
This whole, this entire, this meeting.
The meeting meets on a monthly basis and is published.
Who met, is published where and who assisted in the meeting?
Since 1973, we have been meeting. And where have you been?
I've been here, not at the meetings, I've been and living here, and where do you publish these things? Oh, we see the paper, is it publicized on the radio? This impacts all of us, all of us, and all of us in all of these cities and towns across these communities. And this is a huge, huge issue.
Are we done?
I have a question, if it's okay. I'd like to know who's paying you too, only because, is it my tax dollars? So I'd like that answered. I think we deserve an answer to that.
What is relevant?
I think he's correct, and I think we deserve an answer.
We're not going to get into it.
But why would, why would you not release, you said you're getting paid, why would you not release who's paying?
I'm being paid also, I'm being paid by the citizens of Exeter to come here and represent them, and at our PCE meeting to have meaningful dialogue, not to have a trial.
No, sir, we're not having a trial.
Yes, we are, you are.
No, sir, the question was asked, and you refused to answer, and now I'm suspicious.
What is irrelevant?
It isn't irrelevant.
I said, what is irrelevant?
What's relevant is he said he was paid, he isn't like Mr. Clement here, who is being paid by the citizens of Exeter, sir.
Clemmons.
Oh, Clemmons, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Clemmons.
We're gonna cut this conversation off.
No, no. Why not answer it, though? Can't you explain why you would not answer this?
It's all public information. You can get it. It is not on the agenda tonight.
It doesn't matter whether it's on the agenda. A citizen that pays taxes has asked you a legitimate question, and we deserve an answer to that, sir.
You may come to the office and get some information if you want.
Why can't you answer it now?
That's not the purpose of this meeting. These meetings have been happening...
The purpose of a meeting is to represent citizens of this state.
If you will listen for one moment, you're not gonna learn anything if you don't listen.
No, because I'm hearing, as, as this gentleman said here earlier, I'm listening to measuring factors from automobiles and oil, and nothing else. Nothing else is figured into the factoring of what's going on with the ozone, and I'm supposed to accept that. And I'd like someone to explain to me, why would I accept that? Change my mind?
Talk to EPA, not to us. We're not making these decisions.
Then why are they here discussing it when they can't answer the question?
They're trying to inform you if you were listening.
But they're not informing, sir.
That's because you're not listening.
No, 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 hold on, hold on.
This is an MPO meeting that happens on a regular basis for people who understand what the purpose of an MPO meeting is. We are not here to be penalized by you people who have not done their research.
Excuse me, excuse me, you people?
Before you came to the meeting.
We're all citizens of this country.
Yeah.
Yes, this is America, last I realized. Okay, land of the free, home of the brave.
No, I remember sitting down and being quiet right now. Now, this is just getting me on, as Cliff mentioned, we, we review our budget after regular commission meetings, not the MPO meetings, which are quarterly. All that information is public, which you are certainly...
But we're here now. If you'd answered the question, we could move on. In two seconds, five seconds, we'd be done. But you won't answer the question.
Whose interests are you representing? That's all we're asking. That's all. Obviously, you're not willing to give us that information.
The answer is taxpayers pay for everything in one form or another.
All right, and I wanna know how my taxpayer dollars get into his pocket, because he's not an elected official.
And that we can find out online. We're not gonna discuss it anymore tonight.
Why would you not say it now and just be done with it?
When you do your research before coming to a meeting.
You're already sending the agenda by not answering the question. That's, that's what we're here for, when people in this country...
I'm here to talk about salaries, it's not paying what the people are.
It was a simple question. It was a simple question.
Those separate meetings.
Could I, as far as the environmental questions go, I don't wanna give my opinions or facts I'm not a hundred percent sure of. If you give me a question, send it, either through the commission to me, I'll personally give you an answer and give you the information you're seeking about the environment. But I don't wanna just give out possibly misinformation right now.
But I am understanding you correctly that we're, we're measuring the amount of gas infused, and nothing else, trees, nothing else is being considered into the destruction or the non-destruction of the ozone. Is that correct?
We are measuring the result. We're measuring the level, which is the result of a myriad of factors. It's certainly the trees absorbing carbon, and it's cars giving off vapors, and it's woodstoves, and it's power plants, and it's all the reductions in emissions done, but it all filters down to what is the level of particulate pollutants in the atmosphere. So we are measuring the effects of everything. I'm just not there to right now tell you exactly what percentage.
I'm just not, see, I'm just confused. When you put out numbers, that you have this number, and you're only, as you said earlier, if I, unless I misunderstood you, you stated that there was only one factor involved.
No, we so...
You, the trees were not involved?
The trees are not specifically measured, as far as what their effect is on...
But what I'm saying is unless you're measuring everything, how can you come up with a number as to what? This is...
Because the final number we measure is the result of all the effects of the things that are contributing or taking away from the emissions levels.
All right, we have another, uh, final question.
Not a question. I would like to move the point of order that Joe has expressed.
Next item on the agenda is MAP twenty-one, transportation reauthorization. First look at the new law.
We're running way behind, so I'm going to, uh, cut this, uh, short. You have a memo that's in your packet that summarizes what the basic changes in the reauthorization were. Uh, MAP twenty-one refers to the Senate version of the bill that was discussed in detail here at the MPO when we met in Newton. And it became the, the template of the reauthorization law. I'll just make five quick points. One is two-year authorization, or more than two years, twenty-seven months, instead of the normal six years that, that reauthorization has been in the past. The funding level is about even over the next two and a half years. There's a substantial simplification, consolidation of, of some of the basic highway transportation programs, which you can see in the, in the handout and the attachment. The two important things that happened in the law, one good, one bad, I think. One is that there's a transit flexibility provision that was put in law so that small transit operators like Coast and Cart in our region don't get penalized should we move into a larger population category, which is called, uh, you know, a, a transportation, a TMA, it's over two hundred thousand. If the overall urbanized area that we represent has over two hundred thousand people, they would have been penalized. We might have crossed that threshold in two thousand and ten. We thought there was a possibility of that. It turned out that did not happen. We're still below two hundred thousand in our overall, uh, urbanized area that we live in. But the national area did go over that threshold, so, uh, their transit system would have, and Cart would have been very negatively affected, but that was fortunately changed in the law. And that was something that we, um, asked our congressional delegation for help with, and we got substantial help from Senators Fahim and Representative Ginta to, to get those positions, I think. And lastly, I would say it was a, a component of the early version of the law that would have affected how MPOs, how our organizations exist and function. That did not happen in this law. I think some of those changes would have been good. Some would have been challenging for us, I think frankly. But they, in the end, didn't have time to act on those. I think that's kicked down the road for another two years, and will probably be brought up again when this is reauthorized the next time. Uh, there's a lot more performance-based standards that we're gonna have to adhere to in this law. In other words, we're gonna start having to put numbers in terms of congestion performance and project performance that go forward and monitor that as, as it goes forward. That's a sort of a thematic change that's going on in a lot of federal agencies. We put numbers on things to see whether what we do has, uh, to what extent it's effective. And lastly, the bad news is that some of the programs that are the most popular among our communities, transportation enhancements, safe routes to schools, recreational trails, scenic byways, those have all been sort of consolidated into a new program called transportation, alternative transportation, but overall cut by about a third. So, the amount of funding available for those programs, TE programs, for example, that a lot of our communities have applied for and received in the past, that's gonna become more competitive. And I think the DOT has given an option of, um, either making all that money available or withholding some of it. And I think, um, we need to lobby them as communities to try to encourage them to, to not withhold it, to make that available. I think it's the kind of projects and programs that are the most meaningful to our, our towns. So I hope that they make as much of that as they're getting, even though it's thirty percent less available to the most. And that's the summary.
I think some questions on the agenda.
I was wondering, you talked about the thirty-three percent, pardon the enhancements in the state, then you went into the poll. The poll, what does that mean? It means for their own purposes rather than not including the community?
They can transfer it. No, not, not for, not for that purpose, because they can transfer it to other, other communities. And they've already done that in the current tenure plan. Prior to this reauthorization, the tenure plan was not balanced sufficiently.
I'm looking at current, maybe already current, but are you saying that the transportation department is allocating a certain amount of funds for all of these various projects, and the state doesn't have any, can the state push these around where they feel the priorities are?
They can, there's some flexibility. I don't, I don't know the precise details about that. But, um, there is flexibility. It always has been, or at least in the last two or three versions of the federal transportation bill. States have had the ability to shift money from one program to another, from transit to highway, from highway to transit, and, and within some of those programs as well. I, I, I can't tell you the exact...
And you feel it's a lot more flexible in terms of what the state can do with the money? It went from, if you look at the, the first page, okay, well, this is, this is the, the previous bill, the one with just the superseded, or actually, as a second, or a third person superseded. You can see the number of programs here. I think there was something along the order of eighty different programs within that. And, uh, the second two pages are the new bill, um, and there's a lot fewer programs. And so they've consolidated a lot of them. In many cases, it's a real benefit. In some cases, I think, like with the TB and safe routes to schools, the consolidation has resulted in smaller amount of money coming to those programs. And those are programs that our communities tend to use a lot, so it's compacted.
But the state still can have a say in how...
Absolutely. The state and the region have a say in where specifically the money is spent within those programs, like which particular projects are built within the states. It's all the same. The feds have no really... Other than finding a particular project, maybe even a legal use of funds, that's really the only way the feds get involved with deciding what projects get built in a state. Other ways, environmental review and that sort of thing that they deal with. But they don't ever really decide whether or not a project moves forward.
And to be clear, this is, this is, uh, the funding from this company, yes, yes, that is.
And the general, the general budget. Is there a number on that? If you, if you look up MAP twenty-one, it may be like twenty-one. That's the Senate. That was the Senate version of it. The House really did push their version forward, and so it was modified and messaged in the conference committee. And I don't know what the final number was.
It's, uh, HR forty-three, forty-eight.
Any other questions? All right, we move along then to the next topic. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question. It's always on your website, so I'll just, I'll, 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 I'll...
The next topic is transportation MPO population projections.
All right, I've, I've been working on population projections in the region for several months now. And that's part of, really, three things initially, or most immediately, the update of our regional travel demand model and the air quality conformity analysis that Cliff was talking about. We do have to do that one more time, and it's now we're doing it. So these population projections are what we use to sort of establish what is the out-year population of our region going to be. And that's a lot of emissions that come out of the model, and travel that comes out of the models based on the net population employment rate. So it has a big effect. So we'll also be using these projections for our long-range plan updates. We're doing a very minor update to the plans, go hand-in-hand with this air quality conformity analysis. We'll be doing over the next couple of years a major revision of that document and try to get it up to, up to speed with all the new federal, I'm sure, performance-based rules that we're going to be seeing as, as those come forward. And then we'll also be using this as part of the Enhancer Future Project potentially, and it may be tweaked. This is all pretty early in the process, so this is sort of a first look. One of the key rules that we have to follow as part of air quality conformity analysis, as part of our adopting of any of our documents, is sort of latest planning assumptions. What's the most reasonable latest assumption you can use for things like population or employment or the amount of travel in a particular area? That's one of the key things that we're doing, that we have to abide by, and that's sort of what's driving this right now in terms of figuring out how, what our population growth is going to be. We're projecting after a horizon year of two, twenty forty. About thirty years. We're going from two thousand and ten to twenty forty. So really, there, there are two parts of what we're, what I'm doing right now, is employer projections and population projections. I'm gonna talk about the employer projections first. So the employer projections are based on a few things. First, we have our Department of Employment Security database of employment for two thousand and ten. This is, you know, basically raw numbers that tell us, you know, how many employees are in Exeter or in Stratum, and all the towns in our region. We have historic employment numbers from each community, based a lot on the same employment security data. And then we also have, the Employment Security just came out in May with their twenty-ten to twenty-twenty statewide employment projection. And we're using that as sort of a guiding trend as to, they're the experts on employment in the state. They see, they, they have an estimate there where they think things are going, which is they're projecting about a one percent growth in employment per year statewide. And so we're using that as a trend, basically saying, okay, well, we're gonna assume that our region is also going to grow at that same rate. We don't have better information than that at this point. So what this does is this grows our employment in the region. You can see it's starting back in nineteen ninety at about seventy-six thousand. Currently, well, as of two thousand and ten, about a hundred and one thousand. Not, not a whole lot of change from, from two thousand. There went up further, if you, somewhere in the middle. We were up here probably, and then dropped back over the last few years. But that one percent growth per year brings us to about, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand people working in our twenty-seven county. I should say twenty-six county, let's say. And that's what we're using. What happens is our model takes that and we distribute it through the region into different growth areas. That helps to drive sort of traffic-based growth. On the population side of the equation, we use what's called a cohort component model that clusters population by five-year age groups and by gender. And we're given survival rates from each through the Department of Health and Human Services. We graph data from the U.S. Census, from Office of Energy and Planning and Health and Human Services to sort of try to pull this information together about birth rates and death rates, and how many children are born in towns or not, you know, how that's changing over time. So that gets all thrown into a model, which I'll show you here in just a second, to produce the population growth over time. There's another component of that that should have gone here, and that's migration. And that's, that's probably the trickiest thing to predict. And I'll talk more about that in there. For the purpose of our model, we convert the population to housing units, because travel is, is not predicted based on individuals, but more on a household unit as a, as in a, you know, single-family home, where we're used on average, ten trips per day, kind of thing. And so we can aggregate that at a regional level and come up with decent estimates of, of how much travel is occurring in the region. This is sort of a, a small portion of the, of the cohort component model. And basically what it is, is that the new population is derived by taking the old population by age and gender, adding a birth, subtracting deaths, and then adding in net migration. If it's a negative migration, you're subtracting that out. And that gives you your new population, your projected population. So here we have our actual 2010 population by age group. This is looking at females in particular, the survival rates as predicted by Health and Human Services. We have our births up here, and deaths are covered in the survival rates, as in how many of these people are going to survive to the next stage. So then we have the surviving population. You add in the expected migration for the region, and you can see what we're expecting in this particular instance is the sort of late teens to twenties, a number of those people will be leaving the region, and more in migration from the older population. That's pretty typical of many regions, so nothing unusual there. And then take all that together, and that provides us with our projected 2015 population. When we do this, we step this out to 2040. So the thing about the age cohorts is that, can have a, I think nationwide probably we're seeing this, is that there's large baby boomer population in our region. And as that group ages through the cohorts, it sort of creates a bulge, and then a sort of smaller groups behind it. And so what that will actually, you know, assuming the predictions are correct, that will actually result in a dip in our population in around 2030. So we'll start, we'll peak at about 2030 and start to decline after that as the baby boomers sort of start to. Aging out of the workforce, you know, that's, that's what I get. You know, this dip could be offset if there are higher birth rates than are predicted, or we suddenly find ways to live longer, or we get a lot more migration in the region than what we've sort of seen in the last few years. So I'm just going to step through, this is the reach and gender distribution for our region by 2010. You can see this big bulge in the 45 to 55 sort of timeframe and either side of it. And if I step through to 2015, you can see that start to move upward through 2025, 2030, 2035, and 2040, it starts to even out a little bit. So that's really where the result of the bump is going to be, the power bump is, once that sort of bulge goes through, we have a smaller population base to deal with. So that brings, that brings up sort of the hardest to predict part of this, which is, is migration and what the impacts of that are going to be on the region and in the region. It's really the biggest variable. Currently, we have very low net migration. That's still positive to the region as a whole, but it's very slow right now. And it's been decreasing over time. You can see that in the seventies, we brought about 18, almost 19,000 people over a 10-year period, and that's sort of basically very, very rapidly declining now. So it's a, excuse me, a much smaller percentage for our population is the result of people moving into the region. And so in the last 10 years, we had less than 8,000 people coming to the region. On a net, we had more people leaving too, so. So we have to sort of make some assumptions in order to create these future projections about what migration is going to be. And I've done that. I basically assume that there will be some level of growth for every community in the region, and that includes towns that, that have actually declined in population over the last 20 years or so. Specifically Portsmouth, with the closing of Pease Air Force Base, saw a huge drop in population that they're just sort of now recovering from. And Newcastle and Newington, I think, felt sort of the ripple effects of that as well. And so their population, Newcastle and Newington has sort of fluctuated around the same, like 950 people for Newcastle, sort of up a little bit, down a little bit. And, and so it's, those are hard to predict when things do that. So we had to make just some assumptions that there will be a positive growth in each community, maybe small, but it will be positive. I use different statistical models, logistic regression, various, various types of regression to sort of get the parameters, give me a high and a low, to see sort of what, what range are we talking about in terms of statistical possibilities? I also use the two and four decade historic average migration. So what's happened over the last 20 years, what's happened over the last 40 years as, as a way to sort of temper that as well and see what things might go. I also looked at the region both community by community, so there's one of those growth cohort models for every single town in the region, as well as for the region as a whole. And so just to see, you know, I get different numbers when I do things differently. So as you can see, I came up with a few projection scenarios. The high assumes very, very high migration in the region, about 3,600 people a year, which is much higher than anything we've seen historically here. That would give us a 2040 population of just over 300,000, highly unlikely, I think. The low uses the two decade average, basically the average migration over the last 20 years in the region. And it actually sees us pop over 200,000 between 2020 and 2030, and then begin to drop back down again and again. So my thought is that we won't see either of the two extremes, we'll see something in the middle. But there's sort of an infinite number of iterations you could do sort of in between those numbers. So which ones seem most likely to me? Well, I think, you know, the aging vanguard population will keep the natural population growth low in the region. At the same time though, as these folks age out of the workforce, that's going to require people to come in to fill the jobs that they're retiring out of. And so there'll need to be some migration to sort of offset that. With employment security predicting a 1% per year growth in, in jobs, that will require some additional people coming to the region as well. Cost of living close by would be the other option. To create a really high growth, that was the 300,000, we need to see something, major shifts in demographic trends in the United States. We'd have to see, you know, maybe the southwest runs out of water or something, and jobs all start to relocate back to the northeast, or, you know, that's the kind of thing we have to think, see, I think, in order to get to that level. So I don't think that that's, that's what's likely to happen. So my, the scenario that I'm using for the air quality conformity update and analysis and the typical long range plan update predicts us to have a 2040 population of about 230,000 people. So it's a slight increase, it's, it's not the highest by far, and it's not the lowest. It's really a rough guess at this point. So it's, again, using those latest high assumptions. And it basically assumes, as I put up here on the chart, low growth for the first 20 years, and then a more moderate growth at the last 10 years of the analysis. So moving forward on this, we're working with the other planning commissions to get a statewide population projection done, so that we can use that as sort of a control code, so that if all nine of us doing this add up to more than what the state comes up with, we know we maybe have to start looking at, you know, what, what can we do to adjust for that? Employment security will be providing RPC-based employer projections, but those don't be available for this fall. We sort of need them, we need the projections now, so using the statewide ones. When we get into the future, you know, once we get through this fall, we, once we get the statewide projection in place, we get the, the RPC-based employer projections, we may decide that a different, a different projection makes sense, and we'll use that in the future. So we'll be reevaluating this essentially this fall and this winter, once we have the new information. So that's the end of the presentation. Happy to take questions about population.
One more question.
Certainly.
In that process, your last chart, are there peer reviews set up for this? Are you working alone essentially, or are you part of the mass or something?
You know, I'm working alone, but I'm using the resources from like employment security, which gives me the employment projections. I'm comfortable that they, they know what they're talking about with that, so I'm sticking with that. Using the information coming out of like the Carcy Institute talks about demographic shifts in New Hampshire and that sort of thing. So, yeah, I mean, it's somewhat working alone on this, working with some of the other planning commissions to try to make sure that our assumptions are all reasonable. And, and, and that's really what I'm going for at this point, is, is that are my assumptions reasonable?
Well, do you think that the nine of you, you still have a roll up to, to redo by everybody that's working on it?
Yeah, I, I think so, I mean.
And how long do you think that will take to receive that?
I could just take, to speak to that, there is a statewide population projection effort sort of going on in parallel, it's only going to look at.
I'm sorry, we're helping with the fair, we just have to put this away, it'll be a few minutes and then we have to. We have no choice.
Can we just sort out the answer?
Sure, okay. What I wanted to say is, there is a statewide population projection effort going on in parallel for this, and as Dave said, the, the total will come out of that effort will be, we will check ours against most of those at accounting, at accounting basis. And if it's necessary, if, if the total is, is over projected or under projected, then all of us will need to figure out a process for adjusting ours up or down as a total, and distributing that among the towns in the region.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the natural growth part of it. It's the migration that is anybody's best guess. It really will depend on, does the job market expand or contract, what happens to the housing market?
That's the question of.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. And so I, I'm just sort of making a, what I think is a little bit conservative guess as to where I think we're going. And we'll see what happens with that.
How do you do on it?
In the back.
Thank you, Pati Barmi Stradman. How do you factor in the fact that Rockingham County, especially the southern Rockingham County, is a bedroom community for Boston into your projections?
Well, it, it, you know, we project, it is taken into account. We project job growth within the region, but our model, our transportation model actually looks at, you know, what are the draws outside of the region for employment? And Austin, Manchester, Concord, those are all like draws for employment from this region. So those are accounted for, and they're called externals in the larger.
Your model seems to assume that the desirability of New Hampshire is unchanged through this block of time. If you're, from your projection, someone decides that it's too high or it's too low, is there some thinking about how we change the desirability so that if it's too high, we could drop it, if it's too low, we could raise it? Or what's the point of the projection if you're not using it for planning, you could force it to where you want it to be?
Well, I mean, we use it for planning in terms of the population projection, the city door travel demand law, which predicts the amount of traffic and traffic congestion and where it may be occurring in the future. From that, we can compare it to, well, these are the projects that we have programmed, and look at it in that way, and are the projects that we're programming improving congestion, or reducing congestion, I need a better way to say that. Or are they causing more of it, or are they helping? You know, and those are the kinds of analysis that we do for the transportation planning. Whether New Hampshire is more or less desirable, that's sort of a hard question to answer. It's not really something that I, I mean, if we predict a big growth in the region, that's predicting that maybe New Hampshire is suddenly more desirable for whatever region it's in. And I don't know why that would be necessarily, or why it wouldn't be. So we have to just sort of make some assumptions about that. And a lot of times, it's sort of a status quo assumption about desirability, or that's sort of something more nebulous like that.
Just, just to follow up on that question, the State Office of Energy and Planning used to do population projections, I don't know, every year, every other year certainly. They're funding that type, so they're not doing that currently. But certainly every 10 years, the census will be self corrected, so we go back and can use the census data to see how different the census data is. There are some self correcting mechanisms.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at your chart in the here. And are you seeing that the migration, which is at least on this chart, increasing much faster than the, than the projected employment? Does that suggest that the in-migration is senior citizens, or people who are not going to be in the workforce?
In-migration is increasing, well, I mean, there is this sort of assumption that people don't just come on their own to work, that they bring their families with them, so your population is going to, you know, maybe one worker comes into the region, what he brings, bringing their spouse and children with them. So there's some of that. But I think, you know, employment security's projections for 2020, 2010 to 2020, and I'm going to throw out a random number here, this is no connection with anything, they would sit, look at an industry and say, well, that industry is going to increase by 500 jobs over the next 10 years. And a big chunk of that was replacement in terms of people aging out of the workforce. So maybe 250 or 300 of the work isn't actually new jobs, but is actually needing new workers to fill the existing job because people are retiring out of the system. So I think that's why there's a disconnect between the rate of population growth and the population and employment growth. Does that help? It's all, it's all like, maybe we'll see. How many questions do we have left, or we're running behind, I know that.
Just two questions. Are you using city and town member dues to do your projection population studies?
Yeah, I guess parts of it are defined by that.
Are the towns aware of what percentage of their dues is going to this?
I would say yeah. I mean, whether they know how much of my time is spent particularly on this item versus and how much of their money goes to me spending an hour on it, I can attest to that. I mean, I don't think anybody could. But they do know where their dues go, we produce reports every year that say exactly how we spend the money.
I guess my question is, if you said the state is doing the exact same research that you're doing, would you not spend?
They're not.
I must not have caught it in on that.
They used to, and the funding got cut for that, so we're stepping in. And as the nine planning commissions are sort of banding together and, and hiring the person who did the state projections to do them for us essentially, at, on a statewide basis, to give us that control vote.
So can I ask you again, because you said at one point that you were going to verify your figures with the state's figures?
Right.
To assign that to you on that?
Well, when, when the statewide figures come out, and it's, it's hiring the person who developed the model that we're using, and he used to do it for Office of Energy and Planning, he's going to create, he's going to create a statewide projection, and then we'll use that as a sort of the balance against, to say, where are our numbers reasonable? Do not, are we predicting a lot higher growth than what you see statewide? Those are the kinds of things that we'll be able to answer when we have them.
I have an easy request. Has everyone signed the sign in sheet? Certainly it all went around. It has a.
And we put the, do you have it?
Yep.
Okay. We, I put the sign in sheet over here a while back before we had some more people come in. So I think we're out of space, but if people want to sign on the back of it, anybody who hasn't signed it from the back?
The other question I have for the, for the next, the next topic was, is a regional bill out analysis, the first book, about prime, G I S specials, we're going to do that. Bill out analysis is always interesting, but it is, you know, we are, we are kind of running behind schedule, and it's a topic that would be appropriate for a regular commission meeting as well. So if you, if you, if you want to have that presentation tonight, you will certainly do that. Always the folks funded for later commission meeting, and that, that would kind of put us back on track timewise.
Second.
Any discussion on that, Marshall?
I think so.
You'll be a little rejected in the problem.
All right, thank you. Well.
That was great.
Okay, so our, our next agenda item is the Seabrook, we have been running with this again. John Hawkins?
Good evening, I'm John Hawkins, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board at Seabrook. We're, we want to talk about, we're giving you an update of what memory and of understanding that we just completed with the state D O T. You may be aware that over the last 10 years, Route One in Seabrook has developed very quickly, and it's also, there's a lot of big box stores, there's more coming, and part of what went on in that whole process was that big developers would come in, they would work very closely with the state to determine which driveway cuts were, how wide the road was gonna be, where lights would be, and then after they worked with the state, they would come and present a plan to the town. If the town had a problem with any of the items that were in the plan, the reaction of the developer, well, it's already been approved by the state, it's a state road, you know, that's how it works. And so that never sat well with us, and then we had a very large development come through in 2006 and 2009, and the planning board did not approve the plan. And the reason we didn't approve the plan is we didn't think that the developer was doing enough to mitigate the traffic that they were creating. It was on Route One, they took us to court, we lost. And the reason we lost was that the state has the responsibility for that road, and so the judge came back and says, well, it's not, it's not the responsibility of the town to determine whether it's the road, the traffic had been mitigated on a state road, it's the state, and so she ruled against us. And we, we took them to, to the Supreme Court, and we, you know, finally came to a settlement, but the state jumped in and said, no, we have to do these things, or this will be unworkable in this area. So during that whole process, things were, things were happening on Route One, and we still weren't getting the input that we wanted to. So with the help of Julie LaGranchis at the Rockingham Planning and Steve Ireland at the, at the D O T, we sat down and said, okay, we, we want an agreement where we get more input into what happens. And surprisingly, they were very, very cooperative, very accepting of the idea of creating one of these plans, and so we started working on it. The agreement really has two sections, the boilerplate section at the, at the first part of the plan that gives you all the things that each party will do, but then the, the meat of it is an addendum that is specific to Route One. And we, we talked about the things that we like and the things that we wanna see changed, you know, we wanna reduce the number of driveway cuts, all that does is slow traffic flow through. We want to, we wanna have shared driveway cuts, rather than have every individual lot have their own. And Steve, so we've got our agreement, and Steve said to us, you know, to really make this effective, what you need to do is get out your map of Route One with the lots in there, and then just start working on what you think will be combined over time, and what you think will be redeveloped, and show us where you want cuts, lights, everything that's gonna happen on Route One. Now, that's a challenge, because we don't have a clue how it's gonna redevelop, we just know that it will. So over time, we, we have to say, okay, the southern part of Route One where we just created is the Smithtown Village District, we wanna keep three lanes, the current plan is to eventually make that five lanes. So the state is saying, no, we'll listen to you, if that's what the town wants, that's what we'll, that's what we'll leave. And so what we really wanted to say to you tonight is, if you have a state road going through your town, and you have plans for future development, kind of like you heard with Stradman tonight, it may be worth your while to sit down with the state early and say, here, let's, let's come up with an agreement on how we're gonna work with each other, there's a, there's a couple of them out there, I think Seabrook's is more specific because we attached the addendum from Route One. They've also come back, and we're scared that Route 107 going west, it's gonna, the same thing is gonna happen. You know, if gambling happens in the state of New Hampshire, you know Route 107 is gonna, is gonna create, because it dog tracks out there, so there's be something out there. We need to do the very same exercise for Route 107 going west, maybe 286 going into the beach, maybe 1A, but right now, we just started with Route One, and I, I have to say, we're very happy with how cooperative the, the state was in terms of accepting what we wanted to say and giving us examples on why some of the things we wanted wouldn't work, and it was a process that probably, we got done in probably a month or six weeks. So I think it's worth the exercise if you've got a state road and there's gonna be development going on, it's something to think about.
Any questions, we go on?
Next item, the adoption of the I T S.
Excuse me, I was trying to find my paper too. This M O U system, it sounds like the M O U of understanding seems to be able to be created in a very wide range of path, because it mentions that, like it says, the D O T says, well, if we already have an M O U deal with the town, maybe we do this thing quicker. And that type of thing, but I don't know if you have, I don't have any experience in the M O Us of understanding, but what normal function can the town turn over to the state and that is often closer to.
It really is the combination of the town's site plan review authority and the state's curb cut authority that are, that are brought together in this memory and the M O U of understanding, that, that's all it is, it's limited to the state's role in issuing curb cuts and the town's role in improving site plans for market growth.
Let me finish, we're, we're going with the. There's a thing, it's a highway map 21, in that section, and the thing that I thought was kind of interesting, they have highway safety improvement program, and it says projects for projects and so on, but then it goes down, it says penalize states for standard updates to teach a highway plan. Who penalizes our state for doing a highway safety planning behind?
Federal Highway Administration would.
They'd do that by taking back allocated funds?
They would, they would do a future, they would say, you haven't updated your strategic highway safety plan, therefore you won't get a certain, certain amount of money.
I'd be real nervous whenever the federal government would put this hand in the pocket.
Well, I mean, it's, it is federal funds that they would be producing, they would be taking state money, they'd be taking funds allocated from the federal government to state.
Well, it is, it requires the secretary, or the secretary level, it requires the secretary level to establish a national inventory of all highways, bridges and tunnels on public roads. That's a pretty big task for you to got working.
I mean, we have, I mean, we have, I would guess D O T has a very good inventory of all the public roads, I know we've participated in doing a lot of that inventory.
Same, same remark, because I just get nervous when these higher levels of government start poking my nose.
Very much the, the trend has been towards performance based planning, performance based programming of projects.
Somebody has to judge the performance.
And somebody has to judge the performance, but also means they have to have something to judge against, and that's why they're looking for inventories and that's.
We're the ones who will set the performance, the N P Os themselves and where the state, depending on the area of the state, sets up the performance, and we just have to.
We want to see the I T S architecture.
What's your one?
Don't everyone fall asleep at once, that's preparing you, this is not the most exciting topic, I want to do it quickly. This is a project that we worked with our, our partners at the Stratford Planning Commission in 2008, the two of us, the two regions worked together to develop a regional I T S architecture, and I'll sort of get into why in a moment, and this is an update to that essentially, and a strategic plan as well. Intelligent transportation systems. So we recently completed this update, what I'm showing you is sort of chopped out of an hour long presentation, so if it seems a little choppy, I apologize. All right, what are intelligent transportation systems? It's basically using technology to help make transportation more efficient or effective, connecting users to information about the system, or connecting things like traffic signals together so that they can work in cooperation with the. So as, and as an N P O, we are required to have regional I T S architecture, and I T S architecture is essentially a framework for planning and defining and integrating intelligent transportation systems into the projects that we're doing in the region. It basically deals with three things, how agencies communicate with one another, how technologies communicate with one another, and sort of what things that we think are going to happen in the region that we'll use this type of technology to. It's a lot about, a lot of it about information flow between either technologies or people and agencies. So what it does is, and the, the federal government establishes a national I T S architecture, and the architecture itself is really just a set of technological standards and packages of similar technologies that work in similar areas, and it's packaged into what's called service packages. So what it is, is they take this larger national architecture, and then the state creates an architecture that is more tailored to what's happening, in this case in New Hampshire, what specific things are going on or expected to go on in New Hampshire related to intelligent transportation systems that we think are going to occur. So the state puts that into their architecture, and then as a region underneath the state, we create what we think is going to happen in the region that's related to intelligent transportation systems. So it's sort of a tiered approach. All our, our architecture is in concert with the state, and the state is in concert with the federal standard, so it just sort of works like that. So really, there's a few things that it does, it provides a common framework for coordination, it helps to improve transportation system efficiency and effectiveness, it tries to make provision of transportation services more seamless, and then, you know, it just helps to ensure that any projects using federal funds are adhering to the standards that are out there and the rules. So the second document that we have that's related to this is an I T S strategic plan, and essentially what that does is that takes the architecture and translates it into actual projects, something you might actually want to read in this case. The art, the architecture is very much diagram based and flows of information and, and you know, but the strategic plan says, okay, based on the fact that you'd like to see coordinated traffic signal systems in your region, these are the projects that we think will happen in the region that would support that, that's the kind of thing it does. So, and what we do is we, that also has an implementation strategy, and so we're trying to identify how we get those projects funded and constructed, and they go through our long range plan and our, our transportation program. And it's more of a living document that's continually, continuously updated as we get new projects or more, more projects are identified. These are all the individuals or I guess agencies and, and different groups that are invited to participate. In terms of how things are usually done, this one is, the I T S architecture is more of a targeted approach to involvement, where we're looking for people who are owners, who are operators of particular transportation systems, so a lot of communities, the transit agencies, even the, the private transport companies like C and J, try to get mass Department of Transportation, Main Department of Transportation, the neighboring regions, everybody who sort of has a stake in the transportation system directly, we try to get involved. So there is also a, a third document that was created as part of the project and as a final report, it really just summarizes the process that we went through, what's in the two different documents, and key outputs and that sort of thing. More of a summary document, that one is a more interesting read, and the architecture itself, that is available on our website, if you go on the main page of our website, there's actually, in the transportation section at the bottom, there's a number of links, you actually have a separate I T S architecture website set up, and then links also to the three documents that are part of this project. So the I T S architecture contains a couple of things, I'll skip this really quickly, we have the needs and inventory analysis of what's out there already, what's needed for the region, a summary of all the different stakeholders and the different types of technologies that are used in the region, what sorts of types of service packages are already existing or expected to be needed, any sort of standards that we wanna put in place that are different from the statewide or the federal standards, what the operational concept, and that's really just, the operational concept is just trying to translate the I T S architecture into English so that somebody could read it and say, this is what we're trying to do with this. What are the various functional requirements, and sort of, there's a huge set of detailed pences that go through the individual service packages and talk about the different technologies and different things that are involved in each of those. Again, all this is available on the website if you're interested in digging more deeply into it. So we had identified in our region, in the Stratford region, that there were eight areas that we needed to have I T S involved in, management of traffic, incident and emergency management, management of the transit system, the coordination of transit systems, traveler information services, and general economic development, data and information sharing, and infrastructure maintenance and preservation, and this is all sort of in the area, the fact that we've had very limited transportation funding to try to do to accomplish all these things. So I'm just gonna quickly step through the, the other parts, we have the inventory, which is sort of what's out there already organized by who owns it and what, what services provided, the different stakeholders that are involved, you saw that whole list of people that were invited to participate, and then the different elements of the system that are included in that, and the various service packages, as I said, the service packages are made up of different technologies essentially that, that work together to perform a particular task or provide a particular service. There are standards that are put into place as part of the architecture, and it's just basically a common structure for sharing information and, and even both the technology and between agencies. In this case, we did not add any standards to the ones that are in effect, in effect on the national level. So this is sort of a cut out of one of the pages, and just sort of gives you an idea of, of what the operational concept is and how that works, and it's just a description of what the, what a particular piece of technology or a particular system is, who is responsible, or on, that various agencies might be responsible, who participates, and how they might communicate to each other, and it just sort of steps everything through So there are also listed in the I T S architecture a number of functional requirements, and these are again, how these things operate on a higher, more technological level, basically to try to make sure that competing technologies for say signal coordination, that different companies making components, that their, that their pieces of hardware can talk to one another, essentially is what it all boils down to. So the I T S strategic plan, on the other hand, takes all that information of the architecture and tries to boil it down into projects, and in, and in this region, in the Stratford region, we identified 23 projects in a number of different areas that we think are critical for the region. So we, they're prioritized based on consistency with the regional I T S architecture, expected need in the region, if they're multifunctional, that's, that's useful, that's sort of, there's a number of ways, we looked at them, we also looked in terms of, is it a short term need or a short term likely to happen, midterm or long term, and again, long term is in the context, the I T S architecture is only about 10 years, so fairly short term in planning for planning purposes. So we've got along the list of all the 23 projects here, these are the traffic management projects, and they are between the two different areas, and I'll just sort of touch on them a little bit. So the first one is looking at signal coordination and sort of inventorying what's already coordinated in our region, what's not, what should be, what places are eligible to have this, and that the signals are close enough to do it and aren't, that's the kind of information, so that sort of thing, and then there are a number of specific areas where we think actual signal coordination should be occurring sooner or over the long term, Route 125 quarter, Route 111 quarter, Route 9, 108, expansion of open road tolling is something that's related to that, and so looking at the feasibility to expand that feeling where it is currently. the feasibility to expand that feeling where it is currently. We look at transit management, we have a number of projects there as well, dealing with COs and carts, as well as the various agencies like PACC, who's looking at demand response to transit. So, looking at how these agencies can coordinate with one another, can provide better information to the riders, and that sort of thing. So, things like ABL is automatic vehicle location. So, so that users, people who are looking and waiting for the bus, can maybe use their phone to see, you know, the next bus is due in eight minutes. And so, yeah, I'll hang out for that or decide not to, that's the sort of thing that that does. So, there's a number of projects there. Parking management and multi-world management projects, just a fewer number here. One of the things we thought was important was sort of improving the ITS architecture as it relates to, or ITS as it's relating to parking rides in the region, making sure that there's different ways to, maybe you can use your easy pass to pay for parking or that, that kind of thing would be one aspect of that. Looking at Route 1, in particular, we wanted to do an integrated corridor management study to look at what ITS can do on the Route 1 corridor, how it might aid in emergency evacuation and C codes, and that sort of thing. Emergency management, again, similar, similar kinds of things as the last one I mentioned, evacuation ITS improvements, you know, how, how can, how can we use ITS to make evacuation from the C codes going into a storm or some other than more efficient and more effective, and get people out of the way. And then, also, Route 4 incident reporting and corridor ITS on Route 101, we got traffic monitoring, incident detection, that sort of thing on the highways, those can, incident detection can go a long way, clearing up accidents much, much more quickly, getting traffic moving again. So, that's a pretty critical thing. If everybody's ever been backed up on Route 101 and behind an accident, particularly once. So, information management and communications, these are, are sort of more internal kinds of types of projects. We have the SRPC data warehouse and RPC data warehouse. That's just sort of figuring out, somebody somewhere has to sort of keep track of all this stuff, and it's, that's, the idea behind the data warehouse study is really trying to figure out who's doing that and how, and, and that sort of thing. We also have the Traffic Management Center of Confer, and how we communicate with that, and how different aspects of the ITS are, of the ITS already in the region communicates with the Traffic Management Center Confer, so try to improve the backhaul of communications there and things like that. Bridge surveillance is another thing that has been considered very important in recent years. So, doing all this requires a number of agreements, and it just, the strategic plan just sort of tries to identify what those agreements might be, who they might be between, and the type of agreements, so what is going to evolve. So, in, for instance, in looking at corridor ITS improvement, it's really how is information shared is the type of agreement. When you're talking about demand responses or services for transit, it's coordinating your act, how, how are different agencies going to coordinate their activities together to make it more efficient, sort of all, all through the different. So, this is a, this is a sort of a screenshot of the website. As I said, we have a separate ITS architecture website within our website and a strategic plan website also. It gives access to everything I've talked about tonight, the full document, as well as you can even look at the Turbo Architecture database, the Turbo Architecture is the software that they use to create all of those diagrams that we saw, the one diagram, sorry, I should say. So, that's all available through the website, our website, or the SRPC website. It also has. The strategic plan website goes a step further and sort of identifies on a map where the particular projects in the regions are, and the different, and you can sort of select by different types of projects and see, and it gives you the detail that we have on a particular project. So, how do we use those two documents? And it's really pretty straightforward. We use it to guide project development and try to make sure that, really, that the ITS is mainstreamed into the project so that when DOT or community is thinking about a particular project, that they're thinking about technologies that can be used to help make it a more efficient and effective process. And that's really what it boils down to. That, and trying to make sure that the information flows both between agencies and technologies are, are there. So, as I said earlier, they're living documents. We're doing, there's two types of maintenance that we're doing on the document. There's sort of interim maintenance that we do to update a project here and there. That'll be done on a sort of an as-needed basis, but then every four years, we're actually going to go through and revisit the document, revise it, as we did this time in the major improvement. So, the recommendation has been that we set up a standing regional ITS coordination committee. We haven't done that yet. I expect that we will be doing that, that's on the. So, really, the, the two documents that we need to look at for approval from MPO tonight are the ITS architecture, which again is just primarily a technical document, and the strategic plan, which takes those, that technical document and translates it to actual projects that we might, as a region, want to prioritize as part of our tip or plan. So, I think that's where the importance of having an MPO approval on the document is that here's a list of projects that we potentially plan into our tip and plan, we should, we should give our approval to that. So, that's what I'm looking for from the MPO tonight, and that is it.
Questions for David?
Do they have more information and more in-depth information than we just got?
Does who?
The people over the road?
Uh, well, yeah.
You were a little educated, maybe it's better educated?
We've, we've talked about this before in these meetings, the technical advisory committee has talked about this, in their packets that we sent out with the agendas, there's a link to the website that gives you, gives to all the information.
So, I can assume that they're very knowledgeable?
We don't want to go for the answers.
So, I mean, none of this says that we have to build any of these projects, it's more of a, these are the projects we've identified, and we should give them some sort of standing.
David, I have a specific suggestion in 5.4 Transit Management Exhibit 5-2. Would you consider having a seventh item, which would be related to the Route 1 and Route 1A itself? Because that's going to require tremendous signalization, coordination, something which is already a part of it, you have the bridge of going from, from 107 and the first I-95, plus all the, you know, I have to make a very clear construction detail. So, that's my suggestion is that, that be added in, get it sort of on one of the other components that's there, so.
Right.
Can we do that?
I mean, I think we can, when we talk about quarters in this, in this case, I think, sort of look at the bigger picture. So, Route 1 wouldn't just be right narrowly defined as Route 1, but also the connections from Route 1 to 95.
No, I appreciate that. I'll talk about the one map, I, I know it's part of the decision, but the one map, I would just suggest you might look at it and add 107, which would be whatever you want to call it there, but that relates basically to the C code area.
Consider that. That's, that can be, that's the type of thing we might update as, on an as-needed basis for parts of projects.
As needed today.
Another question?
In the fact that, that talks about the fees for the ITS studies, anyway, from 4.5 to roughly 5.5 million dollars, who pays for that? What's the cost? So, and those are the cost estimates that are in this?
In the ITS, yeah.
Who pays for, for those studies?
Well, I mean, I think that depends. In some cases, you might be able to get as part of improvements related to development, a developer might pay for a portion of that, it might be a city or town, depending on what it, each individual project is going to be different. The bulk of our transportation funding in this state comes from two sources, the federal government and the state, and so that's where, if it's on a state highway, the likelihood is that it's going to be funded using federal funds combined with state funds and something else.
Now, here's the big issue for me. I mean, we're running a $17 trillion deficit in this country right now. Like City of Dover, we've had major cuts, and we're all working hard to maintain our budgets. I'm looking at cost, the situations here that may or may not be reimbursed by the federal government, depending upon whether the cities, towns, and municipalities can complete these projects if they sign on to them in the first place. I think that's extremely dangerous, and it's quite precarious for all of the cities, towns, and states across the country. It's not just here, and obviously, this is countrywide that this is going on. So, that's a big red flag for me, I just wanted to make that statement.
Another question, I think?
Yes, Margaret from Dover, and I have a business in Portsmouth, and I was wondering if you could tell me, how many cities in Rockingham County are not going along with this program? Do you have any?
Well, there's only one city in Rockingham County that's in our region that puts, they participated in the development of this, so I assume that they're all involved with it. It is a requirement that we have this in place. It's not really a program in that it requires the cities or towns to do anything other than develop the architecture.
If I could just rephrase that, I, I think I meant to say towns, different towns, like Stratum and Exeter, and that are, are not going along with this program.
As far as I know, there are none that aren't.
So, everybody's signed on to this program as of now?
It's, it's not something that the individual towns would sign on to. I guess that's, it's basically a requirement that we develop the document with the input of the stakeholders in the region, and participation by the communities, it has been there, so not every community has participated in this round. We had different communities participate in the first time we developed in 2008, so it's like, I mean, they signed on by voting tonight, I guess, through the MPO and whoever, those that were.
Will any of this plan implement, implemented, would it be any sort of eminent domain for the owners that are on those corridors?
Usually, I would say ITS are, ITS-related products don't really deal with eminent domain, because they're usually, what it is, it's an add-on to a project that's already happening. So, if the state is going through and widening a state highway and putting in a traffic signal, the ITS component of that is, okay, how does that traffic signal talk to the ones that are next to it? And so, that's sort of what we're dealing with as part of this document. The state, as part of that hypothetical widening, might have some eminent domain issues, but that's, that's going to be on project-by-project basis. And really, what these projects that are listed here are doing is basically saying that we've identified these areas where we think using technology and improving communications can make the system more efficient and more effective. You know, there's nothing that says any of these or all of them need to be implemented, and often, they are related to projects that are already in the pipeline somewhere, and have already been discussed or approved by the state or a manager, or an agency, I guess.
Yeah, I just want to mention that in 2008, in Town of Seabrook planning board, had a vision that we'd like to see a bridge over 95, expand the bridge over 95 because it was getting very congested with all the departments we had. And with the help of Rockingham Planning Commission, our, the bridge was on the list in 2008, and after many ups and downs with the coach system and everything, a unique formula came up that the state is going to pay a portion of it. Town of Seabrook is going to pay a portion of it because they received some money from a big developer previously, who was sitting in our treasury, and the developer who is building a big development, they will give the rest of it. So, that project, after a long time, started yesterday, so I thought that I bring this thing, you know, it is a great thing that a state, a town, and developer can work together and build a big project, and with the help of Rockingham Planning Commission, you know, it is the gear we do today. Thank you.
Can I offer an amendment?
Sure.
I would, forgive me, David, I would like Exhibit 5-2 to have an additional preference to a civilization coordination of C codes, however you want to call it.
Okay, we have a, is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion on the amendment? All the amendments, say aye?
Aye.
Polls? So, now we're back to approving the amendment.
I would like to make a motion, group. Except, as an amendment?
Aye. Second, any discussion on that? All right, now, call for a vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, the last item on the agenda, private status updates.
There's a general private memo that will pass around. We have copies of this as well. Yeah, there are 30 copies of this. There are also the 24 copies of the draft 2013-2016 Transportation Improvement Program project list. So, yeah, 25 copies go around here. DOT has released the list of projects going to be included in 15.16'STIP. So, the projects in the RPC region, Francis?
Yeah, that's, this is a, the second thing that Scott was passing out is, it's basically covered by a memo that I sent to the technical advisory committee. Nothing has really changed since then, so I didn't update this. It's really just a point of information at this point, later this summer, and actually in the fall, we're just looking at approving this project list, and as it's been presented by the state or some law by, if things change between now and the next few months here. So, this is just really a first look. Yeah, and since, as Scott brings up, since the federal legislation approved, the original plan tip was based on a much smaller pot of money being available, so things may change. So, I would expect that we'll see, be seeing that thing between now and then, the end of the summer.
While people are kind of losing handout, we need to locate the sign-in sheet and make sure it's right there.
It's not here.
And everyone?
Just a reminder about the project update now. It's our way of keeping you up to date on projects that we really don't have time to discuss in any kind of detail at the meeting. It's there for you to read, and if you have questions about any of the information there, you can get help from us to find out what's coming down. And if there's anything that interests you now, or you have a question, you have a few minutes, you can take those questions now.
Other, any questions?
The next item is MPO Policy Committee meeting topics for fiscal 2013, which is July 2012 through June 2013. In October, January, and April, we know that in April, DOT is going to come, no, October, sorry.